Good morning, County Council. I'd like to call to order this meeting, a council meeting of July 10th, 2025. At this point in time, as you are able, please join us in standing and singing of Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Counselor Mackey.
President.
Counselor McKay. Counselor Carlton sends her regrets this morning, but is hopefully joining us later today. Counselor Pringle, Counselor McQueen, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dickert, Counselor Kentner, Counselor Kivany, Counselor Body sends his regrets today, alternate Counselor Keppke, Counselor Greg, Counselor Milne, Counselor Dobrine, Warden Matrasovs, Counselor Boarding Yaw.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Echols, Counselor Hutchinson. We have all members in attendance today with the exception of Counselors Body and Carlton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let us begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on a traditional territory of the Inishnaabak Nation, the people of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations. And further, we give, we give thanks to the Chipwas of Saugin and the Chipwas of Nauwash, known collectively as the Saugin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of our lands and water since time immemorial. In the south of our county lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River, Hon Deshone. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. Next, we'll put out a call for any declarations of interest on this agenda for council this morning. Okay, seeing none, no? Um, no declarations of interest, so we'll go to the adoption of minutes. The first one, it's recommended that the minutes of the county council meeting and committee of the whole meeting dated June 26, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor McKay, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. It's on the floor for discussion. Any discussion on these minutes? Okay, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. The next is, is, the next recommendation is that the closed session committee of the whole minutes dated June 26, 2025 regarding a training session on the code of conduct be adopted as provided to council. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Any discussion? Oh, okay, uh, we're gonna go to the clerk for, uh, a comment first. Thank you.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. I do just need to let you know that during the June 26 Committee of the Whole Meeting, I did incorrectly record one vote during the motion to consider a code of conduct training in closed session, which did change the outcome of the vote. It was declared as being carried, but should have been lost. Therefore, the intention of council was to hold that session as part of our open session, um, meeting on that day. So this has been noted in the minutes as well to clarify the record and, um, also identified a bit of a gap in, in process, which we'll be addressing going forward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, uh, we're on the floor for discussion for these, so we'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council and, and staff and guests. I have had in consultation with the clerk, uh, proposed motion, uh, if I may, put it on the floor.
So, so Counselor Dobrine, uh, I will suggest that, that we go ahead and have discussion on this one. And then if it's because it's regarding this matter, we can go straight to your motion after that. Okay, so any other discussion on this motion that's on the floor? Okay, then I'll call that vote. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion is carried. Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you for clarifying the process, Warden. And in consultation with the clerk, I would propose the following motion. Whereas during the June 26, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting, there was a miscalculation of the recorded vote to hold a closed session for training on the code of conduct. And whereas the vote was declared as carried when it should have been lost. Now therefore be it resolved that Gray County Council released the minutes of the closed meeting held under section 239, 3.1 dated June 26, 2025 in recognition of the will of County Council to hold a training in open session. I so move.
Thank you. May I ask for a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Echols. It's now on the floor for discussion. And I'm not seeing a hands virtual or in the chamber, so I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Item number seven, we don't have any closed session matters for this particular, uh, occasion for this agenda. We'll move on to the recommendation that the Board of Health minutes of May 23, 2025 be received for information. We do have Dr. Ara ready to, uh, speak virtually to us this morning, but first of all, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by Counselor Pringle. It's now on the floor for discussion. And good morning, Dr. Ara.
Good morning, Madam Warden. Good morning, Council. Thank you for having me. The highlights from the minutes, uh, from, uh, last month's was, uh, most, uh, pronounced is the 25th year since Waukatoon tragedy. Uh, I presented to the board and I presented to, in the Waukatoon Water Centre, uh, on, on, uh, the safety of small drinking water system as a part of a, a larger panel, including, um, the, the highest caliber people in the safety of, uh, drinking water. And, uh, I, I really wanna thank everybody through the council, through, uh, the, the, uh, audience who can hear this, uh, for everybody who works on the safety of water, whether it's the municipalities and the effort that has been invested in this, or the small drinking water system, non-municipal drinking water system. It, it changed the, the health of the public in, in Grey Bruce and in Ontario. And the lessons learned here were, were turned into a huge success. So thank you for everybody who contributed and continue to contribute. And, uh, Madam Chair, the, um, second part of the highlight is the measles activity. We continue to see a favorable trend. We have, uh, only 53 cases all recovered, no active cases, no current hospitalization, no death. Um, and, uh, we'll do our best to keep that, uh, that, that positive trend continuing. It's important when the school opens, uh, to, to have that level of control. Otherwise, because if it's a winter, uh, virus, we, we might see another surge in the fall. However, um, we'll do our best to keep the same level of, uh, management available. Thank you for, for allowing me to present. Open to questions as always.
Thank you. I'll put it out to County Council. If there are any questions for Dr. Ara? Not seen any hands go up here. No, it looks like, uh, we, we are well informed. Thank you very much, Dr. Ara.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that then, if there's no further discussion, seeing no hands, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Next, we'll move on to the bylaws. It's recommended that bylaws 524025 and 524125 and 524225 be introduced and taken as read a first, second, and third time. Finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and engrossed in the bylaw book. Uh, the first one is 524025 is a bylaw to authorize a donation agreement between the Corporation of the County of Gray and the Township of Southgate to convey lands part of the CP rail trail in the township of Southgate. Item 524125 is a bylaw to authorize the disposition of certain lands in the municipality of West Gray to support a municipal well. And finally, 524225 is a bylaw to confirm all the actions and proceedings of council. May I ask for a mover? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Kivany, seconded by Deputy Warden Milne. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. We have a number of items for news and celebrations. Um, I would like to begin with, first of all, just acknowledging the passing of, of past Gray County Warden, uh, Murray Betts, who passed away on July 4th in his 89th year. Mr. Betts served as the Warden of Gray County in 1975. I had a visit of his photo right there at the back this morning, and cibbened much of his life to public service. In addition to his decades on county council, he spent 31 years on the Artemisia Township Council, where he was a councillor for two years, then the deputy ree for four years, and then the ree for 25 years. We will remember Murray's contributions to, uh, to his community and extend our sincere condolences to his family and friends. And I can say that, uh, although it was just very recently, we were able to conduct the honor guard. The past wardens and myself were there present to be able to, to share with the family the honor that, that it is that he had committed his service, not just to his Artemisia Township community, but to the whole of Gray County. So we very much appreciated listening to the stories and, and in fact, the grandchildren, when they were doing their tribute in the celebration of life, used some of the poems that had been written that included his political career. So it was lovely to see some smiling faces at a time when the family, truly a large family that, that well, well loved within his family, but also it was very clear, very well loved in the community as well. So with that, we would like to continue then with some celebrations. First of all, we will ask the C A O to introduce a, a 25th anniversary of Gray Agricultural Services.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, County Council. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize a, a significant milestone in our community. Gray Agricultural Services, commonly known as Greg Services, is celebrating the 25th anniversary this year. Greg Services was created as a grassroots, farmer-driven initiative in 2000 in response to the demand for services formerly provided by the OMAFRA Extension Offices. For the past 25 years, Greg has been a central resource for Gray County farmers. Operating as a nonprofit, they have, uh, helped educate generations of farmers through their programs and events, helped build community, and supported farm businesses in accessing and understanding local, provincial, and federal agricultural information and programs. Gray Egg Services proudly oversees several valued local initiatives, including the Alternative Land Use Services Program, or better known as Alice, Grey Bruce Farmers Week, Georgian Central Soil and Crop Improvement Association, the Ontario Forage Council, and many more. We've been proud to support Gray Egg, uh, over this, these years and been fortunate to partner on a number of projects, including the Gray County Segment of the Experimental Acres Program. Gray Egg's success stems, uh, from 25 years of exceptional management and dedicated and talented staff. I'm sure many of you remember Ray Robertson, who was a, a, just a giant and an absolute leader in Ontario's egg community. Uh, Ray has passed the torch to Lori Smith for a few years, and she's doing an absolutely tremendous job. We are fortunate to have Lori here today, and I'd like to invite her up to the podium at this time. How you doing? Lori, on behalf of the county, congratulations to all the staff and board members on 25 successful years. Thank you for all the time that you've given to the community. Uh, we look forward to what the next 25 years will hold. Uh, as a token of our appreciation, Warden Matrasovs has a certificate to present to commemorate this milestone, and congratulations. Not sure if you wanna say a few words too, if, uh, uh, following, following our photo, but, uh, we'll, we'll take the time to this. Yeah, no, it's all good. We'll, we'll do so, uh, the certificate.
Well, Randy said much of the stuff that I had planned to say, but I'm probably gonna reiterate it. So anyways. Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. Good morning, members of County Council and staff as well, and guests. Thank you so much for taking the time today to celebrate Gray Egg's significant milestone. 25 years of serving the egg community in Gray County and beyond Gray County as well. I am the Executive Director of Gray Egg Services, but we have an amazing team who are not here today. Patricia Ellingwood, Emily McCag, Rebecca Vito, and Keith and Joni Reed. And our directors, as you mentioned, Randy, uh, include Mike Ryan, Rob Kirkconnell, and Mary Lynn Lawrence. Ray Robertson is our founder of Gray Egg Services and has been instrumental in the success of our organization. He retired in January of '24, but we exist because of his relentless passion for agriculture in this community. His dedication and commitment to serving agriculture in Gray County and beyond has rubbed off on all of the current staff. So I am confident that we have a very bright future ahead. Gray County has supported us right from the very beginning. When it was announced that the OMAF Extension Offices were closing across the province, Ray, with the support of Gray County Commodity Groups, pitched the concept to Gray County Council of a grassroots, farmer-led, not-for-profit agricultural resource center, the only one of its kind in Ontario. And we believe that's true to this day. Gray County Council supported this initiative and even provided office and boardroom space in the lower level of Gray Gables Nursing Home. And that's where we live today as well. Gray County's support grew even more when an annual grant was established in 2004, and that financial support continues today. Gray County also provides us with our internet, phone services, computers, and IT support, which has been an asset to our productivity. We are so thankful for your support. Gray Ag strives to keep farmers connected, informed, and ensure that their voices are heard. We sit on the Gray County Agricultural Advisory Committee, our office plans and conducts over 25 educational courses each year. We create the annual Gray County Rural Guide, which, and we act as a resource center for area farmers. We create many events on behalf of the contracts that we hold. And as Randy said, we manage the Experimental Acres Program for Gray County and Dufferin County. And we look forward to even more opportunities to collaborate with Gray County in the future. We have contracts with Grey Bruce Farmers Week. Randy mentioned most of these, Gray Soil and Crop, Georgian Soil and Crop, Ontario Forage Council, Ontario Biomasses Producers Co-op, and Alice Grey Bruce. And we provide administrative services, project management, and event planning to these organizations. 25 years of serving farmers in Gray County and beyond has been an absolute honor. There's not a finer group of people to work with than farmers. We look forward to our future and many more opportunities to support agriculture in Gray County through education, coordination, and facilitation. Thank you for your time this morning. Thank you very much, Lori. Indeed, you have a crackerjack team, including yourself. But it is truly, the list of the partners that you mentioned just indicates the kind of overwhelming sources that can be out there for support. So for you to be able to be that one-stop shop and allow people to come and say, how can I be supported in my farming? It's so crucial because you've got that network. It, it, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't speed through those lists of partnership because they're very important. That's a very important, along with the, the resources and, and the education programming that you offer, really outstanding in our area. And so pleased to hear that beyond Gray County, it's of use to our farming communities too. Okay, so with that then, I will put out a call for other news and celebrations from our members. Okay. Oh, there we go. We'll go over to, uh, Counselor Kentner.
Thank you very much, uh, Warden Matrasovs. Uh, I just wanna issue an invitation to all county councillors and, uh, everyone listening and watching. Uh, Friday and Saturday are very special days in the municipality of Meaford. Uh, on, uh, Friday, uh, between 10 and 11 in the morning, we are going to, uh, uh, have the time-honored pageantry of the freedom of the city. And, uh, this will be between 10 and 11, just outside of, uh, Meaford Hall. Uh, this was last or first done 30 years ago in 1995, so it's almost like a renewal of vows in, in a sense. And, uh, there's, uh, following the, uh, actual presentation, and, and this involves an exchange of gifts between the base and, and the municipality. Uh, there will be a reception, a public reception at the community center. And everyone is invited. Uh, and it's a great opportunity to actually, uh, meet, uh, firsthand and greet, uh, our men and women, uh, of service. And I really encourage people to take advantage of this. On the Saturday, they are opening the range, uh, with a, a wide array of public events that is quite, quite amazing. I'll give you just one example. On one of the days, uh, and there's only been a handful of them, that the range has been open to the public. Uh, I remember, uh, visiting Mountain Lake, such a beautiful thing. So this time around, uh, there will be, uh, a demonstration, uh, with assault boats on the lake. And afterwards, if you wish, you can have a ride on Mountain Lake in these assault boats. Not just one example. They're, they're just pulling out all the stops. And, uh, not unexpectedly, there is also gonna be a recruitment opportunity in downtown Meaford. So, uh, so I really encourage you to, uh, uh, join us, uh, Friday and Saturday in, uh, Meaford and part of it, uh, on the actual range. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, we'll go online to Counselor Boarding Yaw.
I thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, County Council. I thank you for the opportunity. Um, this coming Saturday, uh, from 11 a.m. till 4 p.m., we have our annual Arts Walk. Um, as a lot, many people know that Clarksburg and part of Thornbury is known as Artsburg. So this is a 2.2 kilometer walks, uh, starting 11:00 in the morning, all the way to 4 p.m. along Bruce and Marsh Street. It's a great opportunity to see local artisans, um, buy, um, different art and different mediums from paintings to sculptures to pottery, and that takes place this coming Saturday. It's a great event. We have a lot of people lining the streets, uh, up and down. And, um, many members from inside and outside the community come for this, uh, great event and to buy some, uh, local art. So we look forward to seeing everybody on, on Saturday. And as well, Madam Warden, we have your golf tournament tomorrow afternoon, so we're very much looking forward to that. I have to beat Counselor Milne, but other than that, I'm, I'm looking forward to the tournament.
Thank you.
And we'll go to councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, county council and staff. And just to clarify. Councillor Kentner had mentioned our events in Meaford. They are next Friday and Saturday, so the seventeenth and eighteenth. But this Saturday in Meaford is the annual, the twenty ninth annual, actually Harbor Five K Run Walk. And that is an event that raises money for our hospital, for new equipment for our ER. And they're on track to raise a hundred thousand dollars this year. So that's really exciting. So far, there are four hundred and twenty three participants signed up. Including, as I just learned this morning, councillor Greg and his crew from his shop, which he's closing for the day to come to Meaford. So if anybody's still interested, you can sign up. The event is nine AM at the Rotary Pavilion in Meaford, but you can get pledge forms online. At MH Foundation at Brightshores.ca or call five one nine five three eight thirteen eleven, extension four two zero eight. So hopefully we'll see some walkers and runners in Meaford from county council. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other news and celebrations? Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands. So with that, then we'll do a motion to adjourn. They ask for a mover. Got councillor Dobree moving, seconder. And councillor McQueen is seconding any discussion on adjournment. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. We'll give a few minutes for our technology to change over. Okay, so we will continue now with our committee, the whole agenda of July tenth, twenty twenty five. I'll call to order the meeting and put out a declaration for interest. Are there any declarations of interest for this agenda? See none. We'll move on to, we don't have business. Oh, business arising for minutes. Okay, we will go on to our delegation. We have a special delegation this morning. We have, we have a large team to present. With regards to the SOS Western University delegation by Dr. Dawn Eby and Sarah Cristancio. Hope I've got that right. With a name like Mattressows, I'm used to it. Come on forward and Director McNabb, if you would like to do the introductions. Thank you.
Good morning, Warden, county council. Very pleased to be here today to introduce to you Dr. Sarah Kerschenko and Dr. Dawn Eby from Western University. They've been working over the past. We've been talking about this for over a year, but they've been hard at work for probably over six months. Performing research on the square outreach services program. So they're releasing their work today and they're happy to be here, even the first to hear their presentation. So thank you for welcoming them.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Good morning, members of the council, guests and staff. Thank you for inviting me this morning to speak with you today, and I would like to start by thank you all for your ongoing support of the SOS initiative that I heard has been very strong since the beginning. My name is Sarah Cristancio. I'm a scientist at the Centre for Education, Research and Innovation in the Shulik School of Medicine and Dentistry at Western University. My research is about how teams work under pressure, especially during crisis situations ranging from trauma teams in hospitals. To paramedics, military teams in deployment and community driven emergency responses. Over the past year, my colleague, Dr. Dawn Eby, who is sitting at the back, and I had the opportunity to study the supportive outreach services initiative or SOS in your community. I want to begin by acknowledging something that I have come to understand through this work. Conversations about marginalizations, addiction, homelessness and mental health are not easy. People inside this room and outside in the Gray County communities may have very different views about why these issues persist and what it takes to address them. This report is not here to convince anyone of a single answer. It's here to offer another way of seeing. A way grounded in the lived experiences of those who perform this work every day and those who receive it. The SOS initiative began in crisis, a COVID outbreak in a room in house. In response, health providers, social services, public health and charities mobilized rapidly to provide care on site. What followed was remarkable. Not just improved up health and reduced crisis, but the beginnings of trust where trust has long been absent. That same grassroots response evolved into a mobile multi-agency team that now travels throughout Gray County. Meeting people on sidewalks, in encadments, at fixed location drop-ins, also known as markets. The people they support often face multiple barriers to care. But what makes this model different is not only where it operates, but how. We conducted thirty one interviews with mobility members, partner organizations, county leaders and clients. We listened closely, analyzed carefully and brought our findings back to participants for feedback. Their words, stories and insights shaped the report that you have today. What we learned is that SOS doesn't succeed by replicating the system. It succeeds by reimagining it. It teaches us six powerful lessons. That trust cannot be rushed. That partnerships rooted in relationships, not transactions make a difference. That leadership is about clearing roadblocks so others can act. That flexibility is not a flaw, but a form of competence. That mobility bridges not just geography, but disconnection. And that sustainability depends on more than goodwill. It requires commitment and investment. Let me briefly walk you through what this looked like in action. First, trust cannot be rushed. We often talk about programs and services. But what SOS reminds us is that trust is the real intervention. For people who have been hurt or ignored by the system, trust doesn't come from policies. It comes from presence. It's the mobile IT member who remembers your name. It's the one who stays with you all night in the emergency room. At SOS, progress starts when people feel safe enough to come back. No pressure, no judgment, just quiet persistence. Because trust isn't a prerequisite for care. It's what makes care possible. Second, partnerships are critical. SOS works because no one tries to do it alone. Instead of staying in their silos, healthcare, social services, charities, even law enforcement come together, not just to share information, but to solve problems together. It's not about one agency doing more. It's about all of them doing better together. These partnerships are built on relationships, not paperwork. The result? When someone needs help, there's always someone to call, someone who picks up, not just because it's their job, but because it's the shared purpose. Third, leadership creates room for action. Effective leadership doesn't mean having all the answers. At SOS, it means clearing the path so others can act. It means trusting frontline workers, listening when they say something isn't working and backing them up when they try something new. Leaders here don't micromanage. They remove red tape, flatten hierarchies and let partner agencies collaborate across boundaries. The result? Faster decisions, more creative solutions and a culture where everyone from mobility members to partners feels empowered to do. Fourth, flexibility is essential. Rigid systems don't work for people in crisis. That's why flexibility isn't a luxury, it's a necessity. SOS meets people on their terms. They move breakfast to lunchtime if people aren't awake before noon. They turn the kitchen into a clinic. They reframe a no until it becomes a yes. This isn't about breaking rules for the sake of it. It's about bending systems to fit real lives. And that kind of flexibility, it's not disorder, it's competence. It takes judgment to know when to bend a rule, courage to try something new and trust among partners to improvise together. When one agency hits a wall, another steps in. That's not just responsive care. It's skilled intentional practice in the face of complexity. Because when care is flexible, it becomes human. And when it's human, when it is human, it works. Fifth, mobility bridges gaps. In a small community's geography alone can be a barrier to care. SOS doesn't wait for people to come to them. They go to where people actually are, under bridges, in bush trails, in encadments. This isn't just about wheels on the road. It's about meeting people emotionally and relationally in the spaces where they feel most themselves. Mobility turns care from a destination into a presence. It makes access possible and trust achievable for people who might otherwise be left behind. But mobility is more than just movement. It's a bridge between systems. SOS functions as a transitional layer, filling the space between emergency response and long term care. For someone who isn't ready to enter traditional services or doesn't trust them yet. SOS becomes the connective tissue, a warm handoff, a soft landing, a chance to stabilize before stepping forward. That's the power of mobile outreach. It doesn't just go where others can't. It connects what others don't. And six. Sustainability requires investment. Passion sparked SOS, but it's investment that will keep it going. We can't rely on goodwill alone to respond to crisis after crisis. Sustainable care needs stable funding, infrastructure that lets people actually work together. Emotional support for the team and education for the community. Participants in this study made clear shifting public understanding is part of the work. Too often, the community sees only the surface, homelessness, addiction, trauma, without grasping the complexity beneath. SOS has shown what's possible. However, sustaining delivery and shifting public understanding takes at all. Without meaningful backup, the very people driving change risk burning out. If we believe in this model, we have to invest in it not just financially, but politically and culturally. Because sustainable care isn't just about what happens on the street. It's about what people believe is possible, and that belief needs to be nurtured to. Throughout the report, you will find stories that illustrate what these lessons look like in practice. One story begins with a man who started treatment, became housed, reconnected with his children and was and was offered a job by someone who said, I was you five years ago. That's the kind of change this model makes possible, not through force, but through presence and patience. And then there's the woman who arrived in Owen Sound alone in the middle of the night with nowhere to go. The SOS team found her, gave her shelter and kept showing up week after week. Today, she's not just surviving, she's become a voice in her community. She reminds people when market day is. She works with them to appointments. She calls herself the loudspeaker for those too scared to speak. These are the ripples that form when systems move closer, not away. I don't live in this community, so I don't presume to tell you what decisions to make. But what I can offer as someone who has studied teamwork during crisis response is this. What you have here is something others are trying and struggling to build. This report is not a prescription. It's an invitation. An invitation to see the issue through the eyes of those closest to it. An invitation to wonder, what might it look like if we continue to invest in trust, in partnership, in the long, slow work of showing up? My hope is not that you agree with everything in these pages, but that you recognize the sincerity, the effort and the impact behind them. Because at its core, SOS is a reminder that in complexes, in complex times, human connection still matters. And that sometimes the most powerful thing a model like SOS can do is to keep showing up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm Dawn Eby, Madam Warden and county council. I'd like to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present the report to you. I do live in this community and have lived in the community for more than forty years and worked most of my working life here. What you have here, what we have here is something very special. You don't find this kind of thing working in many communities. This isn't a new program that we're trying to figure out if it's going to work. This works. What we're particularly interested in is how and why it works. I think that we should all be very proud. You should be extremely proud of the support that you've given to the SOS team over the last four years. Because again, without political support and backup. These things aren't possible. And so once again, I'd like to thank you for your support for this group. For the support and the chance that we've had to present the paper to you. Thank you.
And if I may, a final thank you to Kevin Francesca and all the SOS team who invited us to perform this study. And who have been extremely helpful in helping us getting this to its completion. And thank you, Tim.
Do you have any questions that we can try and answer for you?
Thank you. So in a moment, we will put it out open to council members if they do have questions, but certainly we do, we have celebrated here. The the dedication of the team that's involved in this, that truly. Each and everyone in their roles do not see it as a job, but as a vocation. Definitely a calling to say, how can we uplift? And the reimagine, what you mentioned about reimagining how we can uplift and support has been so vital in this to be able to think outside that box. And it is, it is, as we celebrate our success here. It's very important. Your research is very important because we want to make sure there's good succession for here. So those who come onto the program and learn how to be a member of the team. Know what all of those points were that you've discovered to make sure that none of them get lost and that the program doesn't evolve into something different. But also that it can be a message to communities across Canada about what can work and to help them. Like you said, instead of trying to do something and wondering why it's not working, to be able to look to your research and go, that's why it works here in Gray County. That's what we have to be careful about as we build our own program. So so vital, but I think all of all of council would join me in congratulating and also thanking the team. That you have just recorded on and all the work that they've done. So to the SOS team and to Francesca and and all of the coordinated efforts of the partnership. Let's take a moment to recognize their contribution. And with that, if you want to just stay close to the lectern, I will put it out if there are questions or comments from council. And I think we have all really very much enjoyed all the, I know you said you don't expect us to read the whole thing, but I gravitated towards it and I and I think other council members have as well. You provided us with a lot of extra background understanding. Like you said, the why behind it as we've been observing the success of the program. So thank you. I'll look to the CIO.
First, again, thank you for for the the research and the qualitative research study that you've done. And and I just want to thank the just the incredible partners and staff involved in this SOS program. The work you do every day, meeting people where where they are, offering care without judgment. And building trust with some of the most vulnerable community members. It's it's nothing short of extraordinary. Your compassion, resilience and dedication are making a profound impact and difference. You provide more than just support services. You provide hope, dignity and connection. And this research study is just highlights the impact that the team is making. So. Thank you so much for everything that you do each and every day. And there was maybe a call to maybe do a bit of a photo op if if the warden's okay with that and if the team's okay with that, to be able to. To come and and celebrate the team and the and the all the partners that are involved with this. So thank you so much.
Okay, so that was our one scheduled delegation this morning. So next, we will go to item five, which will be a determination of items to pull from the consent agenda. And we have three items on the consent agenda. So I'll put out a call now to our committee, the full members, if there's anything that they would like to pull. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm not seeing any hands. So in that case, then, we will put forth the recommendation that the following consent agenda's items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, so we'll move now to the items for discussion. The first one is item 7A. It's recommended that the report P S R C W 0425 regarding the supportive outreach services expansion funding opportunity be received and that the warden and the clerk be authorized to sign the funding agreement when received to the satisfaction of the CAO and the Director of Paramedic Services and that action be taken prior to council approval as per section 26.6B of the procedural bylaw. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by Counselor Mackey. It's now on the floor for discussion. I'll look to you, Director McNabb.
Morning, Warden, County Counsel. It feels kind of weird following Sarah and her conversation there because she's told it much better than I can, the story of SOS, even though I've been in it for a long time. So I appreciate that. So just going to talk about the report. Move on the screen. I have it here too. So supportive outreach services is a service that offers care in the community to community members that have suffered from mental health and addictions that are homeless and precariously housed. It offers care where they're at in the community. We go out and find people and look for them and care for them where they're at, whether it be on the street, encampments, under a bridge, wherever they may be, at our markets. And we offer care to them, bringing it directly to them as opposed to them coming to us. This work is slow. It takes time. It takes time to build that trust. Generally, the people that we encounter have most likely been wronged or harmed through the system, whether from lack of care, lack of luck or caring, and just the overall lack of trust to follow up and follow through. So the community itself, we see roughly about 100 people at any given time. That's part of our roster and delivering care to them throughout the entire county of Gray. For quite some time, we've been offering services for four days a week, Monday through Thursday. But we know that there's a lot of stuff happening through Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And when we come back in on Monday morning, there's a number of things that, you know, that I would say fallen through the cracks because we haven't been available to deal with them. So in November, there was the potential for increased funding to expand the work. And when we read the proposal, it met exactly what the work we were doing. So we submitted at that time in November. It was a rapid response to address the opioid crisis. And in February, we were informed that we were successful in that funding. And the funding will allow us to expand SOS services now, seven days a week. And the project goes through until March 31st, 2027. The funding that we've been able to achieve will give us probably about 15 and a half months' worth of staffing once we're up and running. This will allow us to expand our services, you know, across the county, even though that's where we are now, but more time to do that. With more staff members, we'll be able to split the team, be able to, you know, operate more than one place at a time, maybe even two or three at different times. And again, respond to the needs of that community, building trust slowly and then offering care with the goal of everybody on the team is treatment and recovery. Just around the success, and we've been asked this quite a bit about, you know, why? And can you pinpoint what the reason is? And we don't know for sure what the reason is, but we're very happy to report that this year, there's been a reduction in opioid poisonings across grayers. A significant increase that it's been maintaining. When we had our first month, I think we talked even here, a couple of us, about the first month and then three months now and even six months, that reduction is down 70% in overdoses. And I believe it's around 75% in death. You know, we want this to be zero, but it's definitely going in the right direction. We hope to be able to maintain that. And we hope to be able to, with offering more services, be able to continue that number going down, hopefully to zero someday. There is a lot of partners involved in the work in Gray, and I think we should celebrate. You know, you hear through the SOS report about how we all work together here. Like no matter whether it's housing or social services, the charitable organizations, it does start building that relationship with housing first, food, basic needs. You know, healthcare doesn't usually come into the conversations till a little bit down the road, even though we try to get people into care quite quickly. It really is addressing their basic needs first and then building that trust. And maybe that you give somebody a pair of socks for two times, you see them, they may not even say anything. But maybe the third time, they'll maybe start to talk about their addiction. So it takes time. But again, the partners that come together, I believe that we do have something special here. It was backed up in that SOS report that while we're always working together, because it is so complex. We can't fix a health problem without fixing the social problems. And social problems, you don't do well if you don't have your health in line. They have to come together. So that's the idea of SOS and the partners and the work together of all the teams. Another thing that's really made a difference for us, we've received training for Dr. Louisa Bellamore from Timmins around treatment with SUBLOCADE. This is a medication, it's an injectable medication that lasts for up to 28 days. This, when it's given, actually blocks the receptor that opioids bind to. And what it does is it prevents their withdrawal and their cravings, so they don't get sick. And even if they use opiates, the likelihood of overdoses is almost zero. Like there's really no chance because that opiate receptor is blocked now. So with that new treatment that we're able to go through, it's not really a new treatment, but a new way of delivering it, where we're able to deliver it faster. If the person is ready for this treatment, we're ready to go. We'll get it for them when they're ready. And there's very few contradictions. And then through the work of Heather, a nurse practitioner, or physicians that we work with, that they can be given. And again, once we give that to somebody, it lasts for 28 days. And within two or three days, you see a big change in them. And so we really have been quite beneficial to having that available to us. As far as the financials for the grant, the grant's worth 1.126 million. Of this, there's $310,000 for capital. Part of that is to purchase a vehicle. Right now, we operate out of an ambulance or an emergency response vehicle. It's not always ideal for what we try to accomplish. So we did put in for that as part of the funding. And with that funding, we're still able to get the vehicle 15 and a half months. So this was unbudgeted in our operating budget this year, but it will be fully funded through the grant. And the grant will last through March 31st, 2027. Take any questions?
Okay, thank you. We'll begin with Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. The report does speak to the idea of purchasing a dedicated vehicle. And you did just specify that SOS currently operates out of ambulance. Part of the report does say trying to meet the individuals in their own environments. Are we looking at like a pickup truck? Are we looking at a utility vehicle for trying to access some of the harder spots? Can you just be a bit more descriptive on what the vehicle we're looking for?
The vehicle we're looking at is more a vehicle to deliver service out of. When we go into these spots, we generally have a place to park. But quite often, we're setting up a pop-up tent and we're working the elements. So if we had a place where we could sit indoors and have a conversation as opposed to sitting in, the back of the ambulance works, but it's not ideal. It's like jump seats with a stretcher in between. We're trying to find something that we could have a good conversation, sit across the table, something like that. And when we go back into like encampments and mostly often we're on a trail, and we do take advantage of the fire department, they do give us their altering vehicle. They take us back into a lot of these places where we have to walk. But there are times where the team can walk a kilometer or two into the bush.
Thank you. Other questions? We'll go to Counselor Greg.
Thank you for the opportunity and through you, Madam Warden. Thanks for the report, Kevin. Congratulations on getting the funding. And I think back to comments I heard at the funeral for past Warden Betts just the other day. It was stated there wasn't a dollar went through the county that he wasn't aware of. And I just wonder if I could get a little bit more financial insight. The grant, does it cover the total cost of the program to be carried out? Or is it just referring to the cost of expanding the program to the seven days? And I wondered if you could just further break down a little bit how those funds then are expended for operating costs, 816,700. And a little bit more clarity again on the vehicle. In an ideal situation, we get people into housing and we get them into supports. And in the last few years, several initiatives have came online to try to support that. In the ideal scenario, in a couple of years, you're not needing to service those 100 people. We have those individuals into supportive housing or out of the elements where they've got restored dignity and more access. So what was perhaps considered in terms of leasing a vehicle? Because in two years, if there's ultimate success with the program, it's maybe that we have, you know, been ultimately successful and removed that need in the system. So just a little bit more insight into those numbers. Thanks.
So the first question around the funding, this is to fund the enhancement. The four days and the way it's funded right now is covered through high-intensity support fundings from Ontario Health. So that funding will continue. What this does, but that's only for four days. What it does is this gives us the ability to add, you know, resources to the team to deliver those for seven days. So and that funding will be 100% covered. Right now, the funding for SOS, the way it's worked is it's base funding from Ontario Health or SOS. So that is what exists today. And I really hope there is a day come that there is no need for an SOS team. I really do. And there's lots of other work to do. Sometimes people say, well, people do this because they need work to do. You know, I got lots of work to do. But we do this because of a necessity, right? We're responding because people are dying. And so, we will, I really hope the day comes we know this. The issue with leasing, and again, I don't have a problem with it, we can look at it. But when this program's done, March 31st, 2027, and that funding's over and that lease is over, then we lose the vehicle. And this is the benefit of this program is we get to retain that vehicle beyond this. So us by owning it, it gives us that ability to maintain it. If not, we'd have to find funds to be able to continue it. So they did give us 100% funding for that vehicle. So that would give us the ability, if we lose the funding after 15 and a half months, that that vehicle will still be ours. And there's always a need for a mobile clinic to do things with and work.
Thank you. And I would just like to add, it is great to see the federal government supporting the program and the great work that's done here. It was indicated in the initial deputation in those materials that there is some response in the local community to individuals who have traveled here. There was one reference to an individual in a motel from Guelph. There was references to Waukurdan. So it's good to see support for the program coming from higher levels of government that have more ability to fund the response than just having it done on the local taxpayer. Because as it was stated, it's been a terrific success locally that's trying to be replicated across the province. But you'd hate to be a victim of your own success and having so much enhanced need come here and try to shoulder that with the local taxpayer. So it's great to see the assistance being from the province and the federal government to enable that heightened response. So thanks, Kevin.
Okay, any other questions from Committee, the whole members? Let's double check online. Okay, I don't think we have any further questions, Director McNabb. Thank you very much. So with that, then, I'll call the question, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so item 6B, it's recommended that report P S R C W 4325 be received and that staff be directed to invite the Towne Blue Mountains to retain legal counsel on a joint retainer for the review of the Homefield community's development to facilitate cost savings process efficiency. Sorry, just give me a moment. Oh, I'm in the wrong spot. Thank you. The clerk's just advising me. Thank you. It was just a test. Okay, what I meant to say is 7B, not 6B. It's recommended that report T R C W 2025 be received and that a bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration to amend Schedule D, Schedule G, Schedule H, Schedule O, and Schedule U of the bylaw 478813 being the bylaw to regulate traffic and parking on highways within the County of Gray Road System to reflect the proposed revisions within T R C W 2025. May I ask for a mover? Thank you. That's moved by Counselor Eccles and seconded by Deputy Warden Milne. It's now on the floor for discussion. And welcome, Manager Irtin.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, County Counsel. So I'm here to speak to some bylaw amendments to our 4788-13, which is our regulation for traffic and parking within the county road system. The first one, and one of the main reasons why we're bringing this to you today, is we've recently been in communications with Towne Blue Mountain staff relating to some requests for parking restrictions on terms of the timing for parking within the Towne of Clarksville. So we're looking to, well, in working with the Clarksville Village Association, they've been, or put in a request to the town to change our restriction. We currently have an 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven-day-a-week bylaw restriction for two-hour parking. And they'd like that proposed change to be to 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, excluding Mondays and Tuesdays. And the main reason to that is to support seniors' programs at the Marsh Center. So they require longer parking in the evenings. But again, most of the businesses are closed by that point. And again, on Monday and Tuesdays, a lot of those are closed as well. So this is kind of a compromise within the village. This is kind of a compromise within the village association. They've kind of come together to come up with um strategy of what works best for the community at Clarksburg. And uh this change is to reflect that uh desire. Uh the other part to it is that they're hoping to have this all done by the August long weekend, which is again, just why the timing of this report. Uh the second one change we have, uh we had a request for some uh accessible parking stalls in front of the Presbyterian Church in Durham. Uh so these would just be along Gray Road Four, east of Highway Six. And speaking with township uh or the municipality of West Gray staff, uh they had supported this request as well, so we've uh. Looking to add that as part of this bylaw uh change. Uh the next change was uh in the community of Newstat in West Gray. So this is more of a housekeeping uh update. Um basically, the bylaw, in our bylaw, there's um a difference in the timing uh compared to the timing that uh is on the signage. So um the November fifteenth to April fifteenth is the timing that's currently um on the signs in Newstat. And also reflects the same time uh restrictions for winter parking uh within the town of Newstat. So we're basically just updating the bylaw to reflect the signage and also the same being consistent with uh West Gray's uh winter parking restrictions. Uh again, this next one is uh south of Holstein, and it's. Bit of a housekeeping item and more. Um we've actually had um some solar signs for the community safety zones there. So we're extending the safety zone forty meters towards the north. And really, it's because right now the current uh community safety zone sign doesn't get enough sunlight from. I guess there's a few trees that are blocking the sunlight, so uh we're going to move it forty meters north to get full sunlight exposure. And then we have a uh, this is a removal of a no parking zone uh east of Durham. Uh it's at concession two. It's basically a restriction that was put in to prevent some truck drivers from parking on the side of the road. Um who are utilizing commercial business to the uh south there. Uh so again, that business is really not a concern anymore. Um so we're uh removing that parking zone. And the final one is a new no parking zone. Uh this is on Gray Road One, uh up on the shoreline route there. And it's basically, we have an issue from a resident where there's um basically neighbors that are parking vehicles on the side of the road, which is causing. Um sightline issues for them as they come out of their driveway. They're not able to really see anything as they come out and. Uh without being in the oncoming lane, they're basically taking a risk every time they come out of the uh entrance there. So uh this is really just to stop the parking. Um we have had conversations with residents and. They're not necessarily parking there anymore, but this is uh really just to make sure that this is enforced and uh will no longer be an issue going forward. And that's the changes I have for this bylaw update. So if there are any questions, take those now.
Okay, thank you. We're going to keep your slide deck up just in case there are questions, because you've that this is a great compilation of a number of changes that you're proposing. So in case we need to refer back to that, and I'll make. Okay, and so I am confirming that we do have a hand up from Counselor Bourne. We'll begin with him.
Uh thank you, Madam Warren. Good morning again, County Council. I'm just in the the to manage Irtan, just in relation to um the Marsh Street uh n- number thirteen, which is Schedule D.
Need to make sure we've got the audio, so hold on a moment. There we go.
Thank you. Um can uh through the warden and to County Council and to to for manager Irtan. Um in relation to Schedule D for Marsh Street in Clarksburg, um we do have three residents that live o- on that street. And um uh I've they've they've reached out in regards to the the nine AM to four PM. I know we're looking to help the businesses in the town, but have we taken consideration into full-time residents with no driveway access uh whatsoever and no real parking um within the vicinity of their residence uh with this uh new amendment?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Bourne. We've we've had some conversations with with town staff, and we'll continue to have those discussions in terms of. Looking at options for those three residents, um whether it's something that could be a special exemption pass. Uh or something on the enforcement side that we can work out for to be able to resolve some of their challenges. So um so town staff made us aware of some of those challenges, and we'll continue to work with town just to explore those options. Uh we haven't landed on a uh 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 option at this stage in terms of, but we'll we we're aware of it, and we're working with town staff to to try to resolve that.
Thank you, Seo. Much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. And I'll look around the room. We'll go to the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam uh uh Warden Matrasov, I was going to say. Thank you so much. Thank you, Trevor, for the report. I'm just wondering, the the South Gate one, um would it not be easier to? Reorient the cell uh the cellular or the solar panel? Um as we all know, the sun always shines in South Gate, so I'm wondering why we couldn't just reorient a little bit to get a little more, rather than moving the whole works north?
Yeah, through you, Madam Warren. Um. Through like discussions with operations staff, they're basically the trees are there without removal or that. Uh there's really no orientation that we could probably get to get enough exposure to keep the sun going full time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We'll go to Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Trevor. Um enforcement, Trevor, is that done by the lower tier by law enforcement officer? Or is it done by the county when it's a county road?
Yeah, through you, Warden. Uh it is usually done through the uh lower municipality, the member municipality. Uh so effectively, they would put the enforcement through under our bylaw. Um there's no addition to tickets.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any around the room, then. I'll call the question, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to item seven C. It's recommended that report I T R C W zero-one twenty-five be received. And that the budget shortfall of up to up to forty-five forty-two thousand five hundred dollars be funded from I T uh from the I T technology infrastructure needs reserve to cover a one-year lis- licensing extension on server hardware at the administration building and long-term care homes. So may ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Pringle. That's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director McEckern.
Thank you and good morning, Madam Warden and uh members of council. So uh yeah, for this project, I did speak a little bit to it at the recent uh Budget and Finance Committee in terms of a a capital project. So just a bit of background, in twenty nineteen, we purchased a new core server infrastructure for our primary data center here. It was a product called BX Rail. It was hyper-converged infrastructure, which in the industry just means it was a single system that handled your compute and your storage. So prior to that, it tended to be separate components that were patched together. Um and that product was a partnership between Dell, which is probably a familiar um company to you. They we use their their laptops here, which many of you have. Uh they provided the hardware, and there was another company called VMware, which provided the software that allowed us to essentially virtualize the server. So again, traditionally, you would have had individual hard hardware servers for anything you were running, and the newer technology, and we're going back many years now. But um it's all virtualized in the same hardware, so you can use those resources that you purchased um. According to the needs of the applications you're running. So uh we bought into that. We bought it for five years, and originally, we were planning on replacing it in five years. And in twenty twenty-three, we were able to secure a two-year extension on those licenses. We also bought smaller footprint systems for each of the three long-term care homes in twenty twenty. And again, they were uh five-year license agreements that we were planning on eventually replacing. So um in twenty twenty-three, there was a a really big change uh for this product. And that was the uh VMware company was bought out by another company called Broadcom. Um they impose steep increases in the licensing on their clients, sometimes up to three hundred percent on the cost for a lot of municipal clients. Um so whereas we were planning on replacing the hardware in our data center here this year. Uh we planned on extending the license for one more year to give us time to do a full assessment of what it would look like if we rebought this product for five years. What the comparable products for other vendors were. Or even what can we do with sort of cloud-based infrastructure? Can we move more all of our stuff into the cloud? So we wanted to make sure that we were presenting reasonable choices, uh which of course would come later in the budget. But in terms of what to do with that capital system, so we wanted the time to do a full assessment. Uh to try out some of those products to make sure that we don't have any compatible uh compatibility issues with the things we're already using. Um and again, just to to make sure that we are comfortable with where we think this uh our infrastructure should go. For long-term care, we weren't planning on extending uh those uh three systems. They, we used to run more in long-term care, but we still have two applications that require on-premise hardware. And those are the nurse call systems that call nurses to different rooms and the uh elopement uh monitoring system. Those need to run uh when the power goes out and generator keeps our equipment running, or when the internet goes out. They still need to be able to communicate between systems within the building, so that's why they require on-premise hardware. The reason we think we can get rid of those three systems is because when we replace uh nurse call and the elopement systems, they should be able to run uh independently. So their own hardware, and they can still stay connected within the building if there's no internet. Um we didn't have great timelines, so we still had some money in the capital budget for this year just in case. But we had stopped funding those projects for for future replacements. Um and so where we are with the long-term care, we are not uh projects, we are not ready to replace nurse call on the elopement system. And so we are looking to extend uh for one more year uh Lee Manor and Gray Gables. Rockwood Terrace will have to keep running until the new building is occupied. So in the uh capital budgets for this year, uh we have included twenty-five thousand dollars to extend the licensing on our core infrastructure or debt or primary data center. Uh the actual cost is going to be closer to forty-three thousand five hundred. And for long-term care, we included sixteen thousand. We haven't got our uh complete or finalized quotes for that system yet. We have a little more time. However, we anticipate the cost is going to be closer to uh thirty-nine or or forty thousand. So uh the ask today is for one-time funding from uh in the tune of forty-two thousand dollars. So we can cover that shortfall in extending uh the licenses on on all four data center uh systems. And that would give us time again to replace the uh the core infrastructure hardware here next year. And to uh ideally decommission the manly manor in Gray Gables in twenty twenty-six. That is it. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you. So I'll put it out to Committee of the Whole members if they have any questions. And we'll go to Counselor Eccles.
Uh thanks, Judy, for that. Just a bit of clarification. At the start of your, early in the presentation, you said that the malware, the um. Software was bought, it was a five-year uh purchase, but in twenty twenty-three, we negotiated. A two-year extension. So if we bought it in twenty twenty. Three years would have been twenty twenty-three. And just uh it what was the two-year extension if we had already bought it for five years?
Uh yeah, I see your point. Sorry. And so the 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 primary data center went in at twenty twenty uh twenty nineteen. My math is still off a little bit, so I've made a mistake there. I'd have to check the numbers. Um but ultimately, we, when I get the dates right, I apologize. We are licensed until this July, and we need to extend the licenses to twenty twenty-six. So sorry on the confusion on that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any then. I think we're ready then. I'll call the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, what we'll do is we'll do a ten, well, I guess a twelve-minute break. If we could be back at eleven thirty, please. We would do have another few items to go on the agenda, and we'll reconvene at eleven thirty. Thank you. Okay, okay, we are at 11:30. Thank you very much. And with that, we will continue with item 7D. It's recommended that the County of Gray Budget and Finance Committee meeting minutes dated June 25, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that the financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2024 be received and that the treasurer be hereby authorized to approve and sign the financial statements and that staff be authorized to proceed prior to county council approval as per section 26.6B of the procedural bylaw 513422. And that report regarding the 2024 Development Charges Reserve Fund statement shall be received and that council accepts the treasurer's declaration that the county is in compliance with the reporting requirements of the Development Charges Act 1997 and that additional reporting requirements identified by the Smart Growth for Our Communities Act 2015, Bill 73, and that the report and related attachments be made available to the county's website or upon request. And that the report FRBFC 1125 regarding the 2024 Investment Report be received for information. And finally, that the report FRBFC 1225 Leasing Finance Report as of December 31, 2024 be received for information. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor Dickert. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So it was an action-packed meeting. You can laugh. I don't have like a roll-off truck video like transportation does. Director Taylor and I keep saying, we're going to do a joint presentation on something and we're going to try and one-up the departments that have the glitz. I call this good news and celebrations. So we had Tracy Smith from MNP, I'm going to probably think of it as BDO for my entire career, present our 2024 audited financial statements. And we received an unqualified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that auditors can give. So I call that, you know, we passed the exam. It was their first year presenting as MNP and it's a, they gave a little bit of background on their new firm. So it's a Canadian firm established in 1958 and it has a local focused approach with national services. And their comment was that Gray County does a fantastic job and help with an efficient audit and that our staff prepared a very complete comprehensive package for their team to review. So I'd like to thank the staff in finance, as well as all the people in departments that we work with that provide us information so that we can pull all that together. And I think I've mentioned before, we used to, pre-COVID, it was about 17 three-inch binders of working papers. And that's all electronic now. So if you had to change one page, you had to go in, you had to like do their set, our set of books. And it was a lot of work. So this makes it a lot easier to review as well. They provided highlights of our performance with graphical presentation, talked about the materiality level, which is 4.8 million, which is a high number. There were no significant deficiencies found and there were no unadjusted differences. Then we went, we had three departments present their capital presentations. So Director McKecon went first and he talked about IT. He's touched on a bit of that in his presentation this morning, talking about the network sites, servers, towers, how estimates or costs are made. So they look at the first five-year term and assume like a 3% inflation factor. And as, and as you get close to a replacement date, they start talking replacement costs with vendors and made a comment, and we've seen this with a number of departments, seeing higher costs since the pandemic. And some of that was mergers and acquisitions have also increased costs and limited competitive companies. Talked about projects and the software to track assets, the strat plan, the sources of funding. Talked about the enhanced radio communications program with eight municipalities sharing that. There's a report coming on establishing a reserve for eventual replacement of the equipment. And there was questions on Rockwood Terrace. How much of the equipment in the existing Rockwood Terrace could be reused? And the, the issue is you need both sites operational at the same time during the transition. And when the ministry comes to give their review of the home, it has to be as if somebody could move in 10 minutes after their review was done. Talked about more software is, software is a subscription versus on-premise and cybersecurity and how many towers we have and if we have enough. Director Taylor talked about planning capital, which is for land use, forestry and trails. Talks about the equipment in land use, which is the plotter scanner, how when it's finished its useful life in planning, it goes to gray routes. The types of studies and reports, how they're funded, the county official plan and what are legislated studies such as DC and growth management. Forestry and Trails, he talked about major repairs or structures on the CP rail trail. Most of that work is done in-house by the bridge crew. Bridge assessments are done in tandem with structure assessments and transportation. And there was questions on invasive species. Do we have enough money to take care of that? So the questions, we've been battling buckthorn and we've been told that that's an ongoing thing. Not only is invasive species dealing with, but we're dealing with some out of the operating budget or one-time funding, no significant reserves in planning to deal with invasive species. And then there's the others like giant hogweed, et cetera. Then to cap off the presentations, Kevin McNabb presented for paramedic services. He discussed the fleet, repairs, the number of kilometers on our vehicles at time of replacement. So we have seven outstanding ambulances, another five in early 2026. So we're seeing an 18- to 24-month lead time in getting equipment. Hopefully, when the supply chain catches up, then we can get back to our six-year replacement schedule versus the seven to eight years that we've experienced more recently. Talked about the power loads on stretchers and power stretchers and how that reduces lifting and reduces injury, which is a good thing for our paramedic team. Talked about the life cycle of stretchers. Stryker warranties them for seven years. We keep them for 10. Our paramedics are appreciative that transportation services services the stretchers and that good service allows us to keep them for a longer period of time. Talked about DFIBs and the mechanical CPR devices that are relatively new. And that was as a result of a ministry standard about the length of time that you have to perform CPR, the use of stair chairs. Talked about call volume, the bases and the plan and when anticipate Durham will open, which is hopefully later this year. There were questions on the maintenance required on ambulances. And, you know, are we seeing significant repairs? The increase in call volume. So it was around 5% a year. ORH, which is the company that did our review, predicted 5.8 to 5.9. And we can model data on our own or we can pay for a report. Talked about carbon monoxide detectors in the garages and the trailer. And we talked about the use for the trailer and types of training that is being done. And then our manager of accounting, Garrett Reed, presented three reports that are mandatory that we disclose to you. So the lease financing report talks about the number of leases we have and whether we've entered into what's called a capital lease. So some organizations lease computers and then you look at the, the cost of a capital lease versus the cost if you'd acquired the computer outright. We also had the 2024 investment report showing our investment activity and that our investment income was higher than we anticipated, which allowed us to transfer more funds to the one-time funding reserve and also the 2024 Development Charges Report.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction. So I'll put it out to committee, the whole members, if they have questions. Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So thank you very much, Director Spicer. In that case, then I will call the question, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Okay, next we will go into, it is recommended that the committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section 2392 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended to discuss a staff matter about personal matters that, about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. May I ask for a mover in a second here? Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by alternate Kepke. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. So that motion passes. We'll give a moment to prepare the room for the closed session material.